Well, good afternoon. Today is November 1st, 2021. Less than two months left for Christmas shopping. So you better get busy if you hadn't already, especially with shortages and things. Hey, we're glad that you're here. It's always good to see folks that are... It's good to have half a room of people because then those people are happy people that want to come visit. When it's a full room, it's usually an indication that we're in trouble for some reason. So it's good to see a half a room full of people today. We're glad that you're with us. We hope you find your time with us profitable. So welcome. It's a tradition of this board and boards all across the country. We begin with a couple of things. First of all, we're going to have what we call a solemnizing prayer. We're going to have our chaplain, Chaplain Michael come up and lead us. And this prayer is a prayer for the commissioners. It's not for you. We take what we do very seriously, put a lot of work into it, and we seek wisdom where we can. And so, Michael, if you'll come forward, and after that, we'll have the pledge. Commissioners, if you'll join me, and we'll get started.
Lord, we thank for this day. We thank for the privilege to be here tonight. We thank for our county commissioners. We thank for the many efforts they put into before they've come to this meeting today. And we ask you to continue to give them the wisdom they need as we have this meeting tonight. Thank you for Rowan County, Lord, and thank you for our county commissioners, God directed this meeting today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Chaplain Taylor. As always, we appreciate you. All right, Commissioners, we have the agenda. Any additions or deletions to the agenda? Manager, do we have any additions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. If the Board would consider adding to board action an item that I'm passing out regarding the town of Spencer and providing law enforcement assistance.
All right, we'll make that item 8A. No objection. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Some.
All right, thank you. Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, um, let's see, minutes of October 18th been provided. Any corrections to the minutes? If not, do we have a motion to approve them?
Some.
In a second.
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Then the consent agenda that has not been changed, items A through T, motion approved consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, before we move with approval on item T, which is the animal shelter driveway, as I was going through the consent agenda, that particular item on the computer did not load. All I have is a corrupted file, so I don't know what that is. I mean, I can show it to you. I got to pull it up here.
Yeah, that's fine. Do you know about... We pull that off of consent and make it item 8B and to make sure that it's the information's right. Greg, would that be fine?
Yeah, I just wanted to see what it said.
All right, we'll pull item T off and we'll make that item 8B. And then, April, if you're back there, could you check on that for us? Flash the lights on and off if that's a yes.
Yes, sir.
Actually, she can't do that. We got the lights up here. Thank you, April. All right, then do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Some.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there's an item we'd like to add to the consent agenda, please, sir. Yeah, the River Park waiving the permit fees. It's a total of $260.
Remember that? Remember that? All right. All right, so we'll add that back as item T.
Okay, great. Thank you.
We'll add that as item T. Any other adjustments to the consent agenda? Good question. All right, if there's no further adjustments to the consent agenda, then do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some.
Second. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, y'all sure? All right, we're good.
We're good.
All right, then, uh, let's see, we will move to special recognition. Let's see, we bring, uh, who are we bringing up for this? Yes. Mr. Sloup, welcome.
Yes, sir.
See you.
Thank you for allowing us a little bit of time. I'm Chris Sloup. I'm the Director of the Rowan Soil and Water Conservation District. And I'd like to thank the Board of Commissioners for this opportunity to showcase our 2021 Conservation Farm Family. Each year, we select a farm family that we feel is doing the right things to conserve our county soils and preserve water quality from an agricultural perspective. Uh, thank you for your time to share this family with you today. Now, April, if you could start the PowerPoint for me. The Rowan Soil and Water Conservation District would like to recognize our 2021 Conservation Farm Family for their accomplishments for being selected as the North Carolina Mountain Region Conservation Farm Family, as well as runner-up for the state of North Carolina. Wetmore Farms LLC is located in the community of Woodleaf, northwest of Salisbury. Woodleaf is a small farming community known for their tomato production, and the Wetmore Farm has played an integral part of that reputation for nearly 40 years. Wetmore Farms' current owners are pictured here in the center, Artie and Libby Watson. Their son Jacob is on the left with his wife Allison, and to their right is their daughter Laura. On the far right is Libby's uncle, Bob Wetmore, who lives on the farm and is still involved in the daily operations. Wetmore Farms started as a dairy which sold out in 1979 and diversified into produce production in 1983. Currently, they grow about 60 acres of tomatoes and other produce, raise 50 cow calf beef pairs on about 80 acres of pasture, grow about 75 acres of hay, raise corn, wheat, and soybeans on about 200 acres, and maintain a forestry management plan on 60 acres of hardwoods, which was harvested and replanted in 2020. Conservation has always been at the forefront of their operation for decades. Highly erodible land plans are on file for all fields of the farm. Works with our office, and they have a forestry management plan on file with the Rowan Forest Service Office. There are field borders on all the produce fields and most of the row crop fields. There are more than a dozen grassed waterways located on the farm in order to trap sediment and runoff from the produce fields, which are traditionally conventionally tilled. Conservation drip irrigation is used to water the produce crops, which are grown on plastic mulch. They practice strictly no-till on row crop fields away from the home farm that no produce is grown on, as well as cover crops being utilized on the row crop fields and off-season produce fields. The Watsons family is well-respected in their community and have an extensive knowledge of conservation. They make their farm open to local preschool and elementary schools for tours. Several FFA groups have used the farm for training for land judging, and North Carolina State University currently uses the farm for tomato variety testing and test plots. The Watsons are also very involved in their community. Artie is a member of multiple commodity groups and association and served as the Chief of Woodleaf Fire Department for over 20 years. He is also the past president of the Woodleaf Civitans. Libby retired as a lone officer from Piedmont Farm Credit last month and has served on the FFA Alumni Council, Rowan Ag Advisory Board, Rowan Arts and Ag Steering Committee, North Carolina Dairy Youth Foundation, and is co-chaired the Woodleaf Tomato Festival Committee. Both Jacob and Laura were very active in West Rowan FFA in high school and competed in dairy judging, livestock, agronomy, and dairy foods. Jake served as chapter president and received a Star, State Star Farmer Award. The farm has received many awards in the past, including 1989 Outstanding Young Farmer Award, the 1985 Corn Grower of the Year Award, which was the first official corn yield that exceeded 200 bushels per acre for Rowan County, and was 1985 Rowan Soil and Water Conservation District Conservation Farm Family of the Year recipient. Now, April, you could start the video for me, please. Many thanks to the Rowan County IT Department and especially April Everett for filming the drone footage this spring and for editing this video for our presentation. This is the most, uh, some photos from the farm that April got for us. But these are some strawberries from the beginning of the season. What you see at the bottom of the screen is a livestock stalk trail, which provides access for the retained heifers to access the barn for winter and daily supplemental feeding. The water tank shown here in the center of the screen was installed to provide water access to the animals since the stream was fenced out of the, uh, was fenced out of the pasture as a part of the project. This is the second stalk trail on the farm, installed under North Carolina Ag Costure Program in 2004 and is still in use on the farm today, 17 years later. This is a view from the rear of the farm that shows a gravity flow water tank and the pond that supplies it. Next is a field of no-till corn in the spring, showing the terminated cover crop underneath it. The cover crop provides structure to minimize runoff and conserve soil. This is a field of early tomatoes early in the spring, and their migrant H2A workers tying them up on trellises. This field also contains trial varieties from North Carolina State University. Notice that the fields are planted on the contour and contain field borders and grassed waterways. The white plastic mulch is for future production of crops. The white color plastic is to help keep soil temperatures down later in the season. This is one of their irrigation ponds and the sand filter unit that's necessary for conservation drip tape irrigation that places water directly in the root zone and conserves precious water. This is the early strawberry crop, as well as a field of peppers here on the right. Congratulations again to Wetmore Farms LLC, Mountain Region Conservation Farm Family of the Year and runner-up for the state of North Carolina Farm Conservation Farm Family of the Year. If we could take the opportunity for them to come forward. Would you guys mind taking a picture with them?
No, we've got something for them.
Well, we want to say we're proud of what you guys do. We appreciate you guys. I told you all, we moved here in Florida in 1995, and our kids went to Luminees School. My son invested a lot with their little boy back then. We were just comparing pictures. So we've known this family for almost 20 years. We just appreciate it. If you're out of community, you stay this family. Appreciate the farming work that you do. So we have a proclamation that gentlemen like to read in honor of this.
All right, let me step up here. So we get...
I have such a soft voice. It doesn't come across well at times. Proclamation Farm City Week. Whereas agriculture is an $11 billion industry for the state of North Carolina, the state ranks number one in the nation in farm cash receipts for tobacco and sweet potatoes, number two for poultry and eggs, and number three for fresh market cucumbers and strawberries. And whereas Farm City Week highlights partnerships, farmers here and across the nation produce an abundance of nutritious, good tasting food for everyone to enjoy. Their partnership with groceries, truck drivers, processors, scientists, consumers, and many others all play important roles in getting food from the fields to the household tables. And whereas Rowan County has over 118,000 acres of farmland with an average farm size of 129 acres, 97% of our farms are family-owned. Rowan County is the state's second-largest producer of strawberries and fourth-largest producer of tomatoes. And whereas Rowan County farms bring an annual net income of $19.5 million to the county each year with a market value of $82 million in agricultural products. And whereas North Carolina Cooperative Extension Rowan County Center and the Rowan County Soil and Water Conservation District are encouraging people to speak with farmers or agro-business providers so they can learn more about agriculture and where their food, fiber, and fuels come from. Now, therefore, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November the 15th to the 19th, 2021, as Farm City Week in Rowan County and encourages all citizens to observe the significance of this week. This is the first day of November 2021. Thank you to the Wetmore family, number two in the state.
And on top of that, let me tell you, this is kind of people that if you ever need to crack or stuff and put tablecloth and poop you out, it will not take a dollar for that stuff. That's the kind of people they are. Are they eligible to apply again?
Not, not for a couple of years.
Will they apply again? Let us know what we can do. All right, do we have anyone for public comment? April, anyone online for public comment?
Yes, we'd like to invite our online guests. If you would like to speak, if you can use the raise hand feature. Do not see anyone.
Hearing none, then we'll move on to item number four. Shane, it's SNI 07-21 for Ray City Properties.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is our typical sort of run-of-the-mill SNI permit application for Mooresville Motorsports. We've got several industrial parks out in the western area, so these are always requested on an as-needed basis. So staff received a site plan from a Faves Construction and Darden Engineering, and it proposes a 16,000-square-foot building here. It would be a series of race shops, and it's kind of common to that area out there, in addition to light manufacturing. But in the staff report, anytime the board's ever curious, we keep a running total per our watershed. Cottle Creek's the one that's getting spoken for in terms of the nearest that 10%, but we're still well under our allotment. And I do break it down in two ways. One, we have 165 already taken out of our total, which is 1188, our 10% of the entire watershed. So if you flip that around, then we're at almost 14% of our 100%. So the request meets all standards of approval. Be glad to answer any questions.
Oh, Shane, just a question. Which direction does this stream run?
So Cottle Creek will flow south. This will be to the, uh, I believe that's...
Salisbury is where it might end.
Ma'am?
Through Salisbury is where it might end. Does this creek come through Salisbury?
No, so that, anything on 152 and south generally flows south. That's our breakpoint.
Okay. I just didn't have a map, so I wasn't sure where we were.
Good question.
All right, any other questions for Shane? We're not asking for a public hearing here, so we just need a motion and a second to approve.
Motion to approve.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Shane, thank you. Uh, next item is a resolution supporting sanitary sewer connection within county conservation easement area. And I'll ask our county attorney if he would address this.
Say that again.
Say that again.
Say that again.
Well, our action item is on the, uh, resolution supporting the sanitary sewer connection within the county conservation easement area.
Yeah, that's... So as part of the closing of our landfill that was adjacent to the airport, part of what we worked out was a conservation easement at the time that protected the Grants Creek area. Within that Grants Creek area and within what was dedicated as conservation easement, there's a sanitary sewer line and that is connected, I think, primarily most would recognize the Forest Glen Residential Development and some other residential developments in the area connect to it. It's sort of the major line through that area going west out between 29 South and 150 Mooresville Highway. And if you recall, most recently, the city of Salisbury approved the 270-unit residential development at the intersection of Mooresville Highway and Rowan Mill Road. Um, and, uh, and the developer has agreed to voluntarily annex into the city. They would like to connect to that main sanitary sewer line. And they would like to connect through our conservation easement. And the conservation easement very generally prohibits land disturbing activities. But I believe that most are in agreement that temporary land disturbing activities for a connection would not necessarily be prohibited. I don't think that your predecessors on this board that created that conservation easement would have necessarily forever prohibited any future connections to that because it just sort of, it really stops any development out through that area without installing new lines somewhere else. And so the current developers of the 270 unit, through their attorney, have reached out to me. They've reached out to the Land Trust, which is now Three Rivers Land Trust, and reached out to the city, and they're hoping that we would support this resolution as the owner of the property to allow them to connect. There'll be some more, uh, meetings after this with Three Rivers Land Trust, who ultimately controls the final decision. But I think they're going to take their request very respectfully to their board and ask their board to approve the connection. And this is just a resolution in support of what they would be taking to that board requesting permission to connect.
And the statement that you made that our prior board certainly would not have done this in order to stop further development, I think is, there's no one in this room that disagrees with that. And so what we're doing here is showing our board's support for not building on conservation land, but simply being able to access this sewer system that is underneath conservation land, hooking on and then restoring it. And the construction goes on in another place entirely.
And that's correct. And I think, I don't want to speak too far out of turn, part of the sanitary sewer through this area is above ground, and so some of it's above ground. But it's my understanding that the developer is proposing some enhancements to the conservation area. So not only sort of restoring and replacing any areas that are disturbed to make the connection, but might also propose some enhancements within the area that would just add to the conservation easement.
So this is an attempt of the county commissioners to really reach out to the city and give them assistance and support them in what will be a really nice project for them that is kind of a phase two of Forest Glen. So if there aren't any other questions, do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
So move.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Keep those. Jay, thank you for your work on this. We were getting contacts about this. We don't understand all of this, but just want to let you guys know Jay jumped all over it and really appreciate your work on this. Thank you for working between our boards. All right, let's see. Fire department funding, is this coming from here or from... All right, Eric.
Okay, this is an agenda item to discuss giving funding from the COVID-19 funds. Or not the COVID, well, it is COVID-19, but it's the last portion that we received to the fire departments, and this would require board approval. It would be similar to the funds we provided. Well, we were, a long time ago, we weren't required to give a portion to the municipalities, but we did. And then we were required to, and we developed an agreement between the county and the municipalities that they signed, which, you know, basically ensured that the money would be spent in compliance with the federal and state guidelines and rules and regulations. So if, if this is something the board approves to not, or this afternoon of giving a certain amount, and the dollar amount, I think, is $50,000 per fire department from the ARP funds, would ask that they authorize the manager to work with the director, not the director, but the chief of the Chiefs Association to come up with an agreement that would be agreeable for both parties in order to provide the funding to the fire departments and at the same time protect the, you know, the county's... um, and at the same time protect the, you know, the county's, uh, interest.
All right, so, um, I'm try, trying to think of the motion. The motion here would be to provide fifty thousand dollars to each of the voluntary fire, volunteer fire departments around county. And ask the county manager to work with the chief of the, uh, president of the Chiefs Association-
Yes, sir.
Uh, to, to work, uh, on an agreement that would be brought to each of the departments, that they would spend these funds within the rules of, um, of, of the, the COVID dollars that we're getting in order to protect the county.
Yes.
In, in, in a nutshell. All right, I'll, I'll make that.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, uh,
Yes.
I think we had discussed also, uh, we're gonna include the rescue squad. Oh, one, there's only one rescue squad, yeah. In the motion, yes.
I, I think, uh, I think the chief, Chief Zimmerman?
Yes.
Are you, you the chief, are you currently the, still the chief?
President of the fire department.
Okay, all right. I can give you a copy of what we used, um, shortly after this meeting, if you wanna do that.
All right, so everything I said, including, uh, of the rescue squad, so-
Second.
Any other discussion?
The only thing I'll say is that when I've talked to a couple of chiefs, they just, they do wanna make sure that they get the right guidance from the county. And, uh, I think we want them to have it, so. They certainly, uh, have had a rough year like everyone else, and I'm glad that we were able to help them. A lot of them weren't able to do their fundraisers like they normally do, so I think this should help them, uh, replace some of those funds.
Chief, anything from you?
Aye.
All right, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, and, uh, thank you, chief, Mr. President. We appreciate your good work, and, uh, we'll be out there to speak with your folks and thank, thank them again. Uh, Arnie, thank you for what you do out there. All right, uh, budget amendments have been provided for-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I, before we, before we start into that, um, we set up, and I can't remember these project names, I'm sorry, uh, but we are setting up, um, a request for a public hearing for the solar farm that is being proposed for, uh, Gold Hill. I was trying to think whether it's southwest, it's east, southeast, or northeast, I guess. And I just wanted to take a minute. Those things are so controversial, and it had been turned down, uh, by, uh, our zoning board on there, and I just wanted to, to, uh, take a minute and let our attorney explain why we are taking that up when it has, uh, been recommended to us not to, uh, by our other board, not to, uh, allow this.
Um, with permission of the chair, that was item P, um, on the consent agenda to set the public hearing for November fifteenth, um, for Okra Holdings LLC, which is the solar farm outside, uh, Gold Hill. Um, and, and I think very briefly, um, the, the short answer is, your planning board makes only a recommendation to this board. Uh, they hold a courtesy hearing, um, it's not required, but they hold a courtesy hearing to sort of flush out the issues and try to vet all of the issues related to a zoning case uh, in advance, and then they vote to make a recommendation to this board. Uh, they often make, uh, some proposed findings, they often, uh, make, uh, adopt statements of reasonableness and consistency. Um, and so, uh, but they do not have the authority to approve a rezoning request or a use request, uh, like the solar farm. Uh, so currently, uh, this board's the only board that has the authority to make that final decision with the recommendation, uh, of, of the planning board, uh, that comes to you just for background information, really. Um, and in this particular case, on the consent agenda, what we also agreed to do was to publish, uh, proposed, uh, rules regarding the public hearing uh, as it relates to time to present a case, time to respond, time to, uh, voice any opposition, uh, in hopes that we can get that hearing organized, um, uh, and effective, so. Is that?
Yes, exactly. I, I just wanted to be aware that it is a requirement of us to take these things on and make the decision, and it's not, uh, something that we choose to do.
Well, it doesn't end at the planning board, I think.
End exactly with the planning board.
Thank you, Jim, and, uh, Jay, thanks for, uh, your comments. All right, uh, let's see, our-
Budget amendments.
Motion to amend this, we have a motion.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have some appointments, board appointments, I'll make several of them, uh, and then, uh, ask for motion in a second. The Danger Stock Appeals Board, Lindsay Moore, applied to fill a seat. Uh, that'll be a three-year term. Home and Community Care Block Brand Advisory Committee, Beth Huber, is the new director of Trinity Living Center, and the board's asked officially appointments, Huber, to the vacant seat. Full Town Volunteer Fire Department Commissioners, Brian Kirk, has applied for reappointment for a two-year term. And Rowan County Board of Adjustment, Brad Basinger, applied to fill a vacant alternate seat. Do we have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Norman Riedlin, uh, also reap, applied to the Rowan County Board of Adjustment. He has served two terms. And so under our rules, he's technically not eligible for reappointment, but because of difficulty in finding volunteers for this board, we are being asked to waive the two-year term limit and then consider reappointing Mr. Riedlin. So do we have a motion to waive the two-year term limit?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve Norman Riedlin?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
Nope, nope, no, we, the, and, the-
Oh, the T, the-
Thing that Aaron came up with.
I was gonna say, it's still daylight now.
Back up.
So I, yeah, item, uh, T.
Eight, A is what you made it?
So, and I've forgotten myself, which is not difficult, yeah. So, uh, here, item eight A, which will be the law.
And then after that, the, the road, okay. Um, Jim, can I see your copy? Thanks. Um, this is, uh, very similar to the, uh, what was done in two thousand and sixteen for the city of Salisbury. The, uh, town of Spencer, um, has requested, or the town manager has requested on behalf of the town of Spencer, if, um, the sheriff's department, uh, can us provide assistance in law enforcement, and so, um, you have two motions, um, before you. The first one is to authorize the manager to execute the interlocal undertaking agreement between the town of Spencer and Rowan to provide temporary law enforcement assistance to the town, and the attached resolution, which you should have, both of those, um, the resolution is the first attachment, and the second is the interlocal undertaking agreement. And if you could just, when the board approves that, if you could also authorize us, since this is a formal resolution, uh, uh, to make any, um, non, um, substantial changes, because we did this pretty fast, and there may, may still be an error left over, because we converted the two thousand and sixteen to this one, but in general, it should be the exact same, except the dates and the name of the town. And so that'd be the first motion. Um, the, um, the fee to the town would be fifty dollars for each hours of service to the town. I think in sixteen, it was forty-five dollars. Where this, uh, and that includes the vehicles, the fuel. Um, in addition to that, motion two, um, is that the, each deputy that works an hour would be paid time and, and one-half of their regularly hourly rate, um, irrespective of the number of hours they work for the county, so it would be automatic overtime for any hours. And then if they, if, if any deputy works, um, a minimum of forty hours within a fourteen-day period, they would get an additional three hundred dollar bonus. Um, and then a hundred and fifty dollar bonus for working eight hours on, uh, November eleventh, which is Veterans Day, twenty-fifth Thanksgiving, December twenty-fourth, Christmas Eve, December twenty-fifth, uh, Christmas, and thirty-first and January first, New Year's Eve and New Year's Day. Um, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to, to answer them.
Aaron, is there a termination date on this? I mean, is this going forever? What?
Um-
It says six months.
There is a turn, there, there is, there was in the, one was Salisbury, I think it was-
On the same last page.
Six months. So, uh, the effective date terminates, uh, in six months.
It's gonna be the end of March, right?
And so Spencer will reimburse us a forty to this area.
Yes, sir.
And they'll have to vote on this.
Yeah, I think their, um, next meeting is this, maybe it's this coming Monday or Tuesday. Um, but I don't know, it was in between this meeting and our next meeting.
All right.
I'm good. Yeah. Now, I just wanna, this is the same, this looks like the same as we did with Salisbury, which doesn't put our deputies under Spencer Police Department.
Yeah.
So they still operate independently, but they assist calls for service and-
Yeah.
Police.
Yeah, it, it does, um, um, and, and number three, the first sentence says, "The deputy shall be subject to the lawful operation commands of the deputy's superior officers in the town, but the deputy shall for personnel administrative purposes remain under the control of the sheriff." And then in number five, it, uh, "Any disciplinary action arising out of temporary work under this agree, agreement is, would be that of the sheriff, not of the town of Spencer."
Right.
All right, we've done this before, and when municipalities reach out and ask for help, we are eager to help, so, um, this is the case as well, so I don't think we've got a motion in a second yet, have we?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to authorize the county manager to execute an interlocal undertaking agreement between the town of Spencer and Rowan County to provide temporary law enforcement assistance to the town and with, to the attached resolution.
Thank you, um, commission, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Craig, do you have a second motion?
I'll make the motion number two, authorize the approval of the program for the sheriff's deputies to work for the town of East Spent, town of Spencer, excuse me, under the agreement between the town of Spencer and Rowan County to provide temporary law enforcement assistance to the town, and then the, uh, attached payment schedule.
All right, thank you. That's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, uh, thank you, Aaron, for pressing it up so quickly. All right, and then, uh, our last item was, uh, item T from our consent agenda. We just wanna take a look at that. It was, uh, animal shelter driveway. Could you put that up, boards?
Yeah, I, I was handing out these items, when y'all added this back, was that, did you want additional explanation, or was it that you couldn't see it?
Yeah, they couldn't see it. Let me just read, uh-
You just read what it is.
Primary purpose of this memo is to notify the board that an agreement in some form within CDOT will be needed uh, to use a portion of the county's driveway. The purpose is to ensure NC DOT has turnaround space in order to accept the new road from Julian to the dead end for maintenance once complete, so the motion is authorize the county manager to negotiate an agreement with NC DOT. Once negotiated, the agreement will be brought back to the board commissioners for approval.
Motion.
All right, the second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
Say aye.